The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work for the Environmental Support Division in the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, and I welcome you to our public hearing tonight. Our Water Resources Division permit for Laurent Tornau Jr. et al. In just a moment, I'm going to be turning over it to a couple of staff. For now, I want to go over some basic housekeeping guidelines because I know that this is new to a lot of you. And I appreciate your willingness to be flexible on how we are holding public meetings and hearings electronically and virtually. So glad to see we did get several people login, which is great to see. I understand we might have some people also calling in using the phone only, and if you're just calling in, you can only listen in, so you won't be able to actually communicate back with us. But here's the housekeeping guidelines. First of all, all lines are muted, which means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you at this time. If you have questions or comments, we do have a special way that we want you to submit your questions and comments. And I'll mention them briefly now, and I'll go over it in detail later on. But just to let you know, there's a question box you have on your GoToWebinar toolbar. And that's where you can go to enter your questions and your comments. There's also a raised hand icon I'm going to mention in a minute, which will allow you to raise your hand and allow us to unmute you. I will let you know that we are recording this meeting, and we will post it online probably by the end of the week. Also, a special note is if you look under your handouts tab on your GoToWebinar toolbar, you will find handouts for tonight's meeting. There's one in there right now, and Robin's going to be sending me another one to drop in there later on. So you'll probably see another handout pop in there a little later on this evening, so keep your eye on that. You can download those. So our agenda for tonight, it's pretty straightforward and simple. Just add some introductory remarks. It's going to start out kind of like a half-and-half thing. We're going to start out with an information session in which the applicant is going to do a short presentation on the proposed project that you'll all be able to listen to, and I'll unmute his line in just a little bit. Then we'll have a short time where we can do some questions and answers. And during that question-answer session, you'll have a chance to ask questions you might have about that. And so we do have a few minutes for that before we get into the official hearing. In terms of the questions and answers, you know, we'll take it up to the max 6:30 because at 6:30, we do have to start the official hearing. We'll talk about ways to submit an official comment tonight and how that official hearing is going to go. And after we do that, we're going to start the official hearing. So just to remind you, this first part, it's just questions and answers where you can ask questions and we can go through them. And then we're going to move into the official hearing by 6:30, if not sooner. And at that time, that's when you enter in your official comments that you might have. As you wrap this up, we're going to go over where to find other information and who to contact for further information. So in terms of the meeting, how it's going to work, a couple of different ways to ask questions. So if you have a question, you can type it into the question box that you have in front of you, the question box. And if you have a question, type the word "question." So that's going to let us know that this is a question that I'll read off for our panelists to answer. If you have an official comment, we want to make sure it's distinguished because official comments are for the record. Questions are just Q and A. Comments are what's actually on the record and what we have to... You know, it's going to go in for the record for this permit. So write the word "comment" and then type your comment. And I'll remind you again about how to do this. Again, here, that's the question box you have to ask questions. The other way to ask questions or to make comments is to raise your hand. And so you have this little raised-hand icon on your toolbar. If you click it, it'll raise your hand. And if you click the button, it's got the little arrow down, that means you want to take your hand down. So that's how you do that. All right, and if you do raise your hand, just keep it up there, and we will come to you. And I'll read off your names, and we'll then unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. All right, so we do have some Water Resources Division staff here in Eagle with us tonight that are here. Joseph Haas and Robin Schmidt. Joseph and Robin, you want to take a minute to introduce yourselves?
Sure, you can call me Joe Haas. I'm the district supervisor. Work out of the Gaylord Field Office and also have direct reports in the Cadillac Field Offices with Water Resources Division, the Water Resource Programs.
And my name is Robin Schmidt. I'm the district representative for the Cadillac District. And I'm the staff person assigned to review the application that we're here tonight to have the hearing force.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Robin or Joe, did I miss anything before we turn it over to Steve?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay, good. So to start us off tonight, we got a short presentation by Steve Voice from Voice Environmental Group LLC. Steve is in the audience as an attendee. And Steve, I'll let you know, I just unmuted your mic, so are you there? Mr. Voice, are you there? Looks like your mic is unmuted.
I have this, but I don't... Am I supposed to... Okay, there's an amp. It's just Steve Voice.
Yep.
Okay. You're unmuted, so we can hear you right now.
Go ahead, Steve. He'll load the slides.
So Steve, are you there? Okay, so Robin, are you talking to Steve? Because I can't... He's unmuted, but for some reason, we can't hear him.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, sorry about that. Operator error here.
No problem. All right, so we can hear you, and I got your slides here for you. I can bring up the first one there for you.
Yes, if you could bring up the first one. I apologize that I just couldn't log in somehow. My computer was acting up.
Okay, we got it up there for you. Go ahead.
Well, okay, I'm looking at... The one I'm seeing on my screen is the second drawing. Do we have the one that's the overall site plan?
Is it this one?
The one just above it, this before.
This one?
Yep.
It says "overall site plan" on it. You should be seeing it right now.
I am not seeing it, but I have a copy of it, so if it's up on yours, I'm looking at one to see if the second...
Okay, well, that's the way we got the overall site plan up, so if you want to go ahead and...
Okay, good. Okay. Yeah, the project that we've submitted is... And let me pull out my overall site plan. Basically, what Mr. Tornau is applying to do is construct an access road off of Diamond Park, off of Diamond Park Road right away, on an easement that was established along the bottom of these four parcels and the parent parcel years ago. And for access to two upland areas, there's one upland area that is in the southwest corner. Then it crosses, and then there's a kind of a wetland in between the second upland area, which is more on the southwest side of the property. There is an existing historical two-track that was put in quite some time ago. It's overgrown. But they... Somebody clearly put in some fill to access the sandy upland to the west. And they, in fact, excavated a barrel pit or excavated sand out of there, creating a barrel pit. But that sand was apparently used for some improvements to the... and changes to the Diamond Park Road, to Diamond Park Road. The... So what we're proposing to do is we need to expand... Mr. Tornau needs to expand the road, that two-track, which in and of itself is upland, but it's not wide enough to accommodate the township's requirement for it to have a 19-foot-wide drivable surface. So when you build up a 19-foot drivable surface, you're going to be somewhere around... This project, the base of the road is probably 28, 29 feet, maybe get up to 30 at some point. But that's within that easement, so we need to expand it just under 15 feet from its current... It's about 13 feet average wide. The average length of that crossing is about 173 feet. If you go to the second slide, you'll be a chance to do that.
And while you go there, I just remind people that you can zoom into the drawings. That is a feature of the... of the software we're using, the GoToWebinar.
So let me know when you have the second one up, because I'm not seeing that right now.
Okay, it's up right now.
Okay, so this is the detail of the crossing, but I showed the other one so you could see the four parcels, the parcel A, B, C, and D, and then there's a fifth remainder parcel, which is the balance of the property. But this is a close-up of the proposed road, and it shows coming off Diamond Park onto the Tornau property. And it kind of shows the details of what we're proposing. Basically, you can see this... If you have the... You know, if you have video, you can see the stippling for the existing two-track, which kind of runs along the southern boundary. And then, once it gets to that, to the upland on the west or the left side of the drawing, it turns south onto what is the adjacent property. But the proposed road would cross there and then access the three sites that are on that property. Some people in the comments during the public comment period in response to the public notice have noticed that, or have commented that they think this project is similar or identical to the 2009 project that was submitted, and that's not the case. We've worked really hard to make some... To take a look at what we were proposing. And one of the things we discovered during that previous process is that the Green Lake Township does not require the stormwater detention that was originally proposed. So we eliminated that stormwater basin because it was located entirely in wetlands and would have had, you know, a larger impact on that. We reduced the impacts by eliminating that stormwater basin. The impacts were reduced from 10,215 square feet to just 2,515 square feet, which is a net reduction of about 75% of the area. So we're looking at about .057 acres of an acre of impact to widen this road to provide the access to, you know, otherwise usable upland and unregulated upland, or at least from a wetland standpoint. We also changed the construction design and materials for the proposed road to ensure that there'd be greater transmissivity of both surface and groundwater. And currently, you have a road that was just basically sand and gravel dumped on top of the old wetland surface historically, and it's grown up, and it, you know, certainly is much more of a block to the natural drainage pattern. So what we're proposing to do is to excavate both the jumbled-up materials, if you will, of the existing two-track and then the surface soils of the impact area in the wetland, replace that with crushed stones, so you have large pore space, and then put your sand and surface on top of that. And in addition, we would add two culverts. So between the crushed stone base, which kind of allows continuous drainage along the whole extent of that crossing, as well as the culverts for, you know, surface water, you know, more rainstorm events. We're trying to make sure that we're facilitating the natural drainage or re-establishing essentially the natural drainage and hydrological patterns and equilibrium. As part of the application and as Mr. Tornau's consultant, I prepared a pretty detailed feasible improvement alternatives analysis on December 20th, 2019, when we finalized the application. That was submitted with the application. If you look at the greater area, all alternative access routes that are hypothetically available to Mr. Tornau, either from or through his property or on any of the adjacent properties, would result in considerably greater impacts because there isn't that existing two-track available at any other location. So those were rejected because they would have greater impact. It's noteworthy that there have been significant changes in the rules and the law since the 2009 application was submitted, especially with respect to feasible improvement alternatives. Part 303, as amended, provides that there is a rebuttable presumption that offsite alternatives do not exist and that offsite alternatives are not feasible improvement when the purpose is to facilitate a single-family residential development. And so, and this is what we are proposing, so that would apply to this situation. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Voice.
You're welcome.
All right. So just remind everybody what we're doing right now is that we're actually just doing a kind of a Q and A right now. So this isn't official comment yet, but if you have a question about the project, you can ask. You can ask that now. You can either... Just to remind people that came in late, you're all muted. But if you want to have a... If you do have a question, you can either type that question into the question box you have on your GoToWebinar toolbar, and I'll read it off. Or you can click that raised-hand icon, and I will call on you to ask your questions. So I'll leave it open just for a minute or so to see if anybody has any questions, because we don't have any yet. Okay, we did have one question come in right here through our question box. And I'll do my best to read it. It says... Hold on a second. I got a couple of things coming in here at once. I got to adjust my question box so I can read them, so bear with me. Okay, question is, "Didn't Mr. Tornau's second loss in Circuit Court on this proposal come after the Part 303 amendments? How is this not barred by res judicia? Robin, do you want to... Can you address that?
Right, so this issue has been raised, and we consulted with the Attorney General's Office. And Eagle is responsible for accepting and reviewing applications, and any legal questions would have to be addressed in the courts.
Okay, thanks, Robin. And just to remind people that might have came in late, we do have a couple of staff here from our Water Resources Division, Robin Schmidt and Joe Haas here that are addressing these questions if they come in. Okay, we've got another one. It's kind of long, and I will do my best to read it here for you all. If you need me to read it again, just let me know. So it says, "Your proposal includes a large amount of technical data presumably collected onsite, and it also included alternatives which would require easements from an adjacent property. If easements were required for the alternative proposal, are any easements required for your primary proposal? Do you have legal access to the property? If so, how?" And then another question is, "Your proposal..." I guess it's the same. It just was written twice. So do you need me to read that again, Robin or Joe?
No, this issue has always... It's also been raised, and information's been provided in the application for Mr. Tornau that he has legal access to the property.
Okay. And we will show a little later how to access some information in My Waters. I don't think we haven't gone over that yet, but we have a slide later on, right, Robin, if I remember right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, looking to see if anybody else has any hands raised. Okay, and it looks like we do have another question coming in from Mr. Olson. So, Mr. Olson, you have your hand raised, so I'm going to unmute your mic and let you ask your question. So you're unmuted. Go ahead. Hold on there. I'm just had to mute you. Mr. Olson, you might want to check to make sure that you don't have both a phone and computer on. If you have them both on, you're going to get feedback like that. So you want to turn either your phone or your computer mic off, and I'll unmute you again. Okay, you're unmuted now.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, this is a Q and A. So I have just a practical question. First of all, when is the deadline for further public comments and responses? There have been several last-minute documents that have been filed.
Go ahead, Robin.
Yes, so the comment period after the public hearing is May 29.
Okay, thank you, Robin. And did I hear you right, Robin? There was the question about the review of the application, both for facts and legal requirements. And are you consulting with the Attorney General's staff to review these legal issues before you make a decision?
It was really just the basic question of whether or not we can accept the application, given the argument that you raised regarding the court decision. And so it was a narrow and scolded question.
All right, I didn't hear that, but now that I understand how you interpreted it, I don't have further questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Olson. We did have another question come in. It says, "So the department is taking the position that it will consider re-permitting the same substantive project that was previously declared twice by the courts to be invalid." So you want to rest that?
Right, so as was mentioned, we are, as an agency, are required to accept applications and review them under the current state law, which is Part 303, to see what decision we would come up with. And we're in that process right now. The public hearing is part of that process, to gather comments, and we'll make a decision. The deadline for a decision on this file is June 5.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm looking to see if there are any more questions. And Robin, can you remind everybody if people do have questions after this where they should send them? I know you're going to bring this up later, but just can you remind them?
Right, so I guess depending on how easy... You certainly can email me your questions or comments, and my email address will be listed below at the end of the hearing. You can also submit comments to our My Waters page for Mr. Tornau's file. And there's also the U.S. Mail. If you wanted to send your comments to U.S. Mail to our county district office, and that information will be available as well.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions coming in by hand raised or on our question bar. So with that, let me just get to my slide here. Yeah, so like Robin was saying, we are going to start to move into the official comment period of tonight then. And there are multiple ways you can submit initial comments. I think Robin did mention these. If you want to take those down. Sorry, Robin, I should have had that slide up there when you were talking.
No problem.
So I'll leave that up there for just a minute. And just to remind everybody again, that might have popped on because I'm watching our attendees. I know a couple of people did come in late, that we just finished up our Q and A part where Mr. Voice did a quick presentation on the project, and we opened it up to questions. And now we're going to move into the official comment part. So this is the official comment part of tonight. And this part's a little different because what we do, we just hear from you and take your comments. We don't respond back to those comments, so just it's basically going to be you talking or you submitting your comments. And there's two ways you can submit a comment on this project. The first way is to just type your comment into that question box, and you want to type the word "comment" and then type it in. And then I'm going to read that out loud. So if you don't want me to read your comment out loud, type in there, "Don't read this out loud," and I won't read it. Otherwise, for the official record, I will read the comment as you typed it in. The other way to submit a comment tonight is if you want, you can click the raised-hand icon. And what we will do is call on you and unmute your mic, and hopefully it'll work. And you'll just make your comment that way. So those are the two ways to make your comment. And again, there's my slide to remind you all where that raised-hand icon is in with the handout and the question boxes. All right, Robin, well, it's about time. It's actually 6:30, so perfect timing. That's when I thought we'd start. So Robin, do you want to go ahead and read our official hearing statement then?
All right, thanks, Jim. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robin Schmidt, and I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle's submission number HNS-CFYK-VCTPG. With me tonight are other Eagle staff that will be assisting with this hearing. Joe Haas, the district supervisor for the Water Resources Program, is also an attendee. The public hearing agenda. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information on why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearings and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide your comments, and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will provide a short summary in closing. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect in the lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream, or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks, and building a designated sand dune area, wetland, or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act 1994, Public Act 451, as amended. We are here tonight because Laurent Tornau et al. has proposed the following. Application for a permit, HNS-CFYK-VCTPG, under Part 303 Wetlands Protection of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act 1994, Public Act 451, as amended, by Laurent Tornau Jr. et al., 7111 Waterman Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63130. The applicant proposes to excavate approximately 196 cubic yards of material from a wetland area 173 foot long by 14.5 foot wide by 2.1 foot deep. Install two 35-foot-long by 12-inch diameter water equalization culverts with approximately 2 cubic yards of rep rap at each end of the culverts in wetlands. Then place approximately 335 cubic yards of fill in a wetland area 173 foot long by 14.5 foot wide by 3.6 foot deep to widen an existing two-track road on property tax ID number 28-07-020-019-01, comma, dash, 02, comma, dash, 03, comma, dash, 04, and dash, 05, Diamond Park Road Interlock in Michigan. The road improvement will provide access to four upland building locations on existing parcels. The project is located in Township 26 North, Range 12 West, Section 20, Green Lake Township, Grand Travers County, Michigan. The purpose of the hearing. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activity described in the public notice meets certain criteria set by Part 303 Wetlands Protection of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Public Act 451, as amended. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project... In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 303 Wetlands Protection of Act 451, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by Section 30311 of Part 303. A permit for an activity listed in Section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity, and that the activity is otherwise lawful. Subsection 1, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Subsection 2, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows Eagle the following. Subsection A, the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in the wetlands. Subsection B, a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Lawrence Tornell Jr. et al. application an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position. Please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base their decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will take, we will use to take your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Traverse City Record Eagle on May 8, 2020. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, click on the question box in your go-to webinar toolbar and enter the word "comment" and your name. To ensure the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant or the consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in the comment box that they would like to speak in the general order they were received. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, you will not be able to provide comments during this hearing. However, you may submit your comments to Eagle via My Waters, email, or US Mail. If you have written comments and materials that we'd like to present, please email them to me. Upload them into My Waters or send them to me via US Mail to the Calhoun District Office. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, as you begin your comments, we state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given three to five minutes to make their comments. I will indicate to you when you have 30 seconds left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, I will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is holding this hearing to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and listen to those concerns. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making a decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 10 days starting today and ending May 29, 2020. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the 10-day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted to the file via My Waters, to email to me, Robin Schmidt, or via US Mail to the Calhoun District Office. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed, modify the project and issue a permit, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what decision, what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website at the address shown here, but you can't see that, so we'll have that posted, and searching for the permit number HNS-CFYK-VCTPG. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement.
Okay, thanks, Robin. We'll be showing some of that stuff later on, I know. Yeah, so in terms of calling people up, I do have a couple people that have indicated they do want to make a comment in the registration form. If you do want to make a comment, just as a reminder, you want to type your comment in the question box or raise your hand, and we'll get to you. So the first person that indicated they wanted to make a comment was James Olson. So, Mr. Olson, I'm going to unmute your line again, and you can begin making your comment. So your line is unmuted, sir.
Well, thank you. I won't take a great deal of your time. We have submitted letters that are part of the record. I submitted a letter on February 2, 2020, which is part of the record, and I incorporated into my comments. I also submitted a letter dated May 18 yesterday, and that also incorporates the February 20 letter and other attachments, which are attached to both letters. So all of those comments are restated as presented. I won't go into them at this point in light of the time. What I do want to say is that this third bite of the apple is a front to the process that Eagle has committed to this, and when it was a DQ, and what was committed to the courts. You know very well that we've raised the questions of race, judicada, and collateral stoppall, and I think the record speaks for itself, the decisions of the court, what was addressed. I would only emphasize that when you look at the current application and the last ditch effort of Mr. Tornell to hire a new attorney, having abandoned his previous attorney who who lost the case and appealed to the Court of Appeals and lost there, there's now a last-minute document filed yesterday, perhaps today. And I certainly reserve the right to comment on that. But I will make this observation, that most of the facts that are asserted in that are not only incorrect or perhaps a misstatement, but more importantly, the arguments made by Mr. Voice are either subjective, or they're a repeat of the arguments that were litigated twice, decided twice by the Supreme Court and by the Court of Appeals. So this case is over, and I urge you to discuss this thoroughly with the staff of Attorney General Dana Nussbaum. The second point I would make is that race, judicada, and collateral stoppall aside, there are two operating laws here. Predominantly key issues in this case, as identified by the previous litigation in the court. One is Section 30311 Prin 4B, which is the feasible and prudent alternative requirement and test. The other legal requirement is the actual law of the case, as it's put by us lawyers. But when, independent of race, judicada, and collateral stoppall, when in fact the law that is Section 303114B, when that's been ruled upon to a state of facts, there is no other interpretation that the department or Tornell, or for that matter, myself, or my clients, can make other than what is the final law of the case. It's not race, judicada, and collateral stoppall. It's the law of the case. Third point, Judge Powers was very explicit that to achieve the feasible and prudent alternative test, the applicant would have to evaluate and demonstrate either one or two lots a road half as wide, excuse me, a driveway, it's not a road, half as wide, primarily within the limits of the over-two-track, once it's cleared. That has to be demonstrated, not to be a feasible and prudent alternative. It was not done in the first two cases. Nothing has been added in this case. It changed that. The arguments are the same with respect to the alternative issues. Yes, the fourth point, yes, the Wetlands Act was changed, but only with respect to off-site. And as to off-site alternatives, they still have not been considered. And if you read the change in the statute, it doesn't even apply to this case, as I've outlined in my February 2, 2020, letter. Moreover, and this is a crucial point, that the change in the Wetlands Act did not change 303114B or the applicable rule of law or law of the case decided by Judge Powers, which is that the applicant has to demonstrate that one or two lots is not feasible and prudent, or that a recreational use or cabin is not feasible and prudent. This was litigated thoroughly and was clearly on the record, these were feasible and prudent. They've never been shown to be contrary. We've already argued it. It's over. The applicant has not demonstrated that lots, one or two lots, is not a feasible and prudent alternative, other than making the same arguments that were made before. So on that basis alone, the law of the case applied to the feasible and prudent alternative requirement, applied to these facts, this should be denied. This needs to end here. I could say many other things, but in reading briefly the comments filed by Joe Quant, and Joe's an environmental lawyer for many years like myself. Joe did what he could do, but he couldn't change what's happened in the past, and he can't change the basic fact that this project is subject regulated by the WPA, and the applicant has to demonstrate no feasible and prudent alternative, as they described. And secondly, there's no difference in this case and the previous cases that's really material. As I said, the alternative test was changed for off-site. It doesn't apply, and in any event, it doesn't matter because the other parts of the statute were not complied with. Moreover, if you compare the application purpose, the applicant is back saying they want four lots with a road. The court said, "You got to demonstrate you can have a driveway and one or two lots." That hasn't happened when all of a sudden done. So it is needless to say, on an objective basis, this needs to be denied. I could get into some very powerful, I think, arguments about the injustice and arrogance of this application, again, by people that somehow don't want to accept the truth of what the courts have ruled and what they've lost, and the fact they abandoned the case after the Court of Appeals dismissed it. This is extremely unjust, and we don't need to continue spending the money of the people of this state and the time or expending my clients to an unjust degree. This is unwarranted, unmerited, and frankly, my clients reserve the rights of pursuing abusive process against the applicant and any other claim that may exist for unwarranted allegations and lack of good faith argument of law. So I'm gonna stop there. I urge you to put the rest. We've, Robin and I, and Joe, I don't know what you've been involved in, but you know, we've all been around the pike. You know, we did this fair and square, and it's time to move on. And I really thank you for holding this public hearing and moving this forward to a decision. Denial.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you. Looking at the next person that had requested to was a comment, is Steve Voice. So, Mr. Voice, I'm going to unmute your line, and you can make your comment right now. So you're unmuted.
I actually no additional comment. At this time, I selected that just because I thought that was my instruction from Robin, so I give the introductory.
Okay. All right, thank you. Robin, I am looking right now to see if there's any more people requesting to make a comment. And we'll wait. I don't have anybody else's hand up or anything in the question box or comment box. I will wait just for a little bit here, because sometimes there's a little lag behind. Okay, well, Robin, I don't see any other hands raised or comments in the comment box. Oh, I guess not. Thought somebody raised their hand, but I guess not. Okay. Yeah, so I guess if you'd like, you can go to the next step, which is closing it up.
Okay. So thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until May 29, 2020. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all of the comments received and make a decision on the project. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, Robin. I'm just putting up on the screen again the other ways to submit a comment. And I will read off, for those of you that are listening in by phone, I just want to read these off because you can't see the screen, obviously. So other ways to submit a comment would be by mail, by sending in mail to Eagle Water Resources Division Cadillac District Office, 120 West Chapin Street, Cadillac, Michigan, 49601. Again, it's 120 West Chapin Street, Cadillac, Michigan, 49601. You can also submit a comment via My Waters, and you provide your comments directly into My Waters by accessing the public hearing event under submission HNS-CFYK-VCTPG Tornell et al. Also, you can submit a comment to Robin directly, and her email is Schmitt, S-C-H-M-I-D-T-R-1, at michigan.gov. Read that again. It's S-C-H-M-I-D-T-R-1, at michigan.gov. All right, with that, I'm gonna turn, Robin or Joe, do you have anything else you want to say to wrap up?
I just have a quick statement. I just wanted to say this pandemic has been, is really proving to be a lesson in the value of patience. It's been really quite a couple of months here. I'd like you to note that the State of Michigan Eagle staff are presently operating under a temporary layoff. This has Eagle staff taking one layoff day per week for the next 10 weeks. During this time, staff can work no overtime, no comp time, and are not to do any work, including voicemails and emails on their temporary layoff days. Both Robin and I have Fridays off through the end of July. There's other staff, other field staff and Eagle staff that have Mondays off, so those are the two alternating days. Thanks for your interest and particularly your flexibility during this challenging time and participating in this public hearing. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I just want to remind you that this proceedings were recorded, and we'll have them closed captioned after we're done here, and we'll probably have them posted up on our YouTube channel by the end of the week, probably by Friday. And then you can find them on the My Waters site as well, where the rest of the information is located, so be able to find that all right there. Thank you all for joining us tonight. As you know, we were all coming from remote locations, just like you are. So thanks for sticking with us, and have a nice evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.